Give the presentation. And move into the proclamation. And, um, I need a motion. Thank you, Jen, in a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, ma'am. To prove the following. Whereas Michael Myers and Michaela Sullivan have completed the 2017-2018 season by qualifying for state across country meet, and whereas it is especially desirous at this time to publicly express the appreciation of the Hicksville administration and board of education and commend these athletes and their coaches for this fine achievement, and whereas it is proper and fitting to accord official recognition to these athletes and coaching staff for this outstanding example of what dedication and talent can accomplish, now therefore we as the administration and members of the Hicksville exempted village school board of education issue this proclamation as a tribute of appreciation from the entire Hicksville exempted village school district and urge our citizenry to approve and support those events that honor these fine young adults and the coaches for bringing recognition and honor to the Hicksville exempted village school district. In witness thereof, we have here on two subscribed our names and have properly entered this resolution into the minutes of the Hicksville exempted village school board education meeting this 27th day of November 2017. Carrie Bassett?
Yeah.
Yes. Carrie? Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Yes, it's better.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero, and we have certificates for the two of you.
Yeah, Michaela and Michael, if you could come up here, I don't want to make sure we get a picture of all of us.
Congratulations.
Yeah. So congratulations, I don't know if you want to say anything about, you know, your times and your practicing and everything that you did to get to that point? No?
I think I said no. Unhappy.
Finish this. Respect all.
There you go. Congratulations. And just sit right here and the people just stand up. There you go.
Yeah, this is.
It gonna work? Is it gonna work? What have we set on the table?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For real?
Are your feet gonna dangle?
No attention today.
That was great.
Awesome job. School proud.
Yes. You got it.
Yep.
You now qualified for state.
Thank you very much, guys.
Now, Michaela, are you a junior also?
Yes.
So we'll do this again next year?
Yes.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, Michaela, you don't have to stay. The rest of the class is not quite as exciting. Thank you for coming in, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we're gonna move back to our presentation with Mr. Hayes from the Defiance County Economic Department.
Ready, Jerry?
Walk in and go.
Thank you, I apologize for my tardiness and my professional attire tonight. Kind of a busy day. Came tonight to talk about a proposed Village of Hicksville community reinvestment area. This has been looked at for about the last five to six months, and this came from a task force of community members and village officials that wanted to do something to spur improvements in the condition of housing in Hicksville, as well as provide some incentive perhaps for some new construction. So those are the motives behind this proposal. A community reinvestment area provides real tax exemptions for a period of time to incentivize homeowners and other business or residential owners to make improvements to their property. The Ohio Legislature originated this back several decades ago, and it's been a popular program in Ohio and several other states as well. So I'll go through this fairly quickly, but one of the first steps that has to be undertaken is to determine if there is a true need within the community. So the Ohio Department of Child and Family, or excuse me, the Ohio Department of Development Services requires a community housing survey be performed. So back in June, Village of Hicksville commissioned Lommy Valley Planning Organization to do a community housing survey, and should have received a copy of that. That was very well done, did encompass the entire village, and also had information based on census tracts. Basically, there are four census blocks in the village, and the information was organized along those lines. What the housing survey showed is that unlike some communities where they might have a blighted area in one section of the community, there were some structures in Hicksville in all four of these census blocks that were felt to need some attention. This included residential as well as some commercial and industrial structures. So the housing survey has been completed, that was looked at by the village officials, and then Mayor Collins formed a task force, sorry, committee to make recommendations to Hicksville School Board and to Village Council. And Superintendent Countryman was part of that. And what's come out of that committee, along with consultation from the village administration, is actually a community-wide, meaning the entire village of Hicksville, be within the community reinvestment area. Then, in terms of how much of a tax exemption and how long it should last, it has been recommended that a 75% tax exemption be proposed. By the right page, so I don't mistake. And it's broken into two parts, basically residential and industrial or business, and then remodeling, and a separate category to give construction. So I'll run through these real quickly. Under the proposed, under section 3735 of the Ohio revise code, seven years for remodeling of any residential dwelling unit upon which the cost of remodeling is at least $10,000. And such exemption shall be 75% for each of the seven years, so that's residential remodeling. For new construction of a residential dwelling unit, 75% for seven years. For remodeling of existing business structures, defined as commercial facilities, seven years, 75%. And for construction of new commercial or industrial facilities, the same 75% for seven years. So those are proposed, again, throughout the Village of Hicksville. Also, then, speaking to the village solicitor, if new areas should be added to the village territory or village corporation limits, those areas shall be considered part of the CRA also. So it's pretty encompassing, totally comprehensive across the whole village territory. So the process, Ohio law provides that because, you know, real property taxes are one of the major sources of school district income, it's required that we come to the local school board and announce this intention, receive your comments, and then you have the right to have those comments considered by the local legislative body, which is the Hicksville Village House. So that's where we are. Housing survey done, proposal has been made, and bring that presentation and proposal to you tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we'll talk about next steps.
I will comment that the percentage that we came up with is less than what other towns or cities in Defiance County are doing. Like, some of theirs, I believe, was 100%.
Right.
For 10 years or 15 years. I didn't want to do that. So I suggest that 75 for seven years actually step with that meeting as well. So that's kind of how we came up with that amount. It would only be on new projects.
Or remotes.
Or remotes, yes. Not for their total, just the amount they've invested.
Yeah, just the amount of the improved.
Right.
Okay, how long? Is this a permanent thing, or is there a time limit, or?
The way the language in the proposed village resolution, it would be, but it can be rescinded at any time. Now, that would have to come from Village Council. But yes, it is more or less a program that goes on unless rescinded. It's fairly popular, as Superintendent Countryman said, Defiance actually has four community reinvestment areas. Two of those are very aggressive, giving 100% exemptions, and the Village of Sherwood also has one, does not cover all of the village, but probably over 50% of it, and that one is very aggressive, 100% exemptions for both residential and new for up to 15 years. So City of Napoleon has one, many communities have them. So again, the aim is to try to bring incentives to property owners to improve or invest in structures, residential or business.
So everybody in the community, if it's deemed that that's part of the plan, anybody that did remodel over $10,000 could be done that. Or any houses that are built within that, the town would get a 75% reduction. So I guess the question is, how do you possibly come up with a guest amount of how much taxes we're gonna get reduction when every single person in town can do it? You know what I'm saying? I don't know why we would come up with a number.
But we can't yet reduce what we're getting now. Because this would only be on the increase of the, so if there's taxes went from $1,000 to $1,500.
Gotcha.
We'd only get 25% of that extra $500.
Okay, so.
Yeah. And still get the original $1,000.
Okay.
That's right. If Mr. and Mrs. Jones built an additional garage on their property, their current existing property taxes would not change. They continue to pay those just as they have. But on the garage, that amount, they would have their taxes reduced now to effectively 25% of what they would have been without an exemption for the seven years.
So the biggest reduction would be if you build a new house?
Yes.
Remodeling isn't gonna have a huge impact, but a new house would.
Right. And I will tell you, you know, for better or for worse, I know of two new houses in Sherwood that were built within this area, and those two homeowners had no taxes on the structure for 15 years. Now, they continue to pay tax on the land, you can't make, nothing here makes the tax on the land go away, et cetera. So it's just on improved property, but the exemption applies to.
Is there a certificate, like, if you choose to build or remodel a rental property, and I mean, you know, like, is it, do you get that tax deduction when you're done and it's reevaluated?
Yes.
So I can just imagine, like, just half-built properties and?
The community will appoint a housing officer, and then that housing officer will receive the applications and forward those applications onto the county auditor. Then the county auditor will pick, when the auditor picks up that property as being completed, then the exemption starts. But there's a local person, this housing officer, that will help to do the local part in conjunction with the county auditor. On, on, on business-type structures, this is not part of the resolution that council's looking at, but on business exemptions, there, the state requires that there would be a separate consideration of the tax exemption by the school board and village council. And for business projects, the state requires that there would be employment retention or increase. And on business exemptions only, there's the possibility, but not the guarantee, of pilots' payments and little taxes to the school district. So throw that into.
Do we have a vote on that, or is that something that's automatic?
Yes. Now, I think one reason that the village has chosen a 75% exemption for seven years is that falls within the state's guidelines as far as what the school district is guaranteed as far as their year rights. Up to 75% for up to 10 years, village council could enact the CRA over your objections, if you objected. So that's just another little part of the law that applies, but the proposal is not beyond that. So let's say, say, I mean, that's a terrible idea, we won't support it, village council could still enact the CRA here. My original point was that the ordinance kind of precludes a business coming in and saying, hey, I want to put up a new warehouse, but I want 100% tax exemption. That's not allowed under the terms of this proposal. 75% is the maximum village council's considering.
I think anything you do to make the community look better is a good thing, so.
Right. And I'll just say for the record, Superintendent Countryman's been very supportive, very interested in this, been involved all the way, and I think it's important for every community to, to support its maintenance and its growth potential. Housing stock is a very important thing these days, as you know.
So Jerry, what would the next step be as far as the board?
The next step is we would ask the school board, if you feel this way, to pass a resolution of support. We would take that resolution of support to Hicksville Village Council, and they then would consider a resolution to adopt this, this matter. Then, the housing survey and a separate application, and the school board resolution, if there is one, along with the village ordinance, would go down to the director of the Ohio Development Services Agency. He looks over the housing survey, and if everything looks order, i.e., it appears that there is a true need for some stimulus within the community, then he would approve it. Then, and only then, it becomes effective.
How soon do you want that resolution, or how soon is, are you on a timeframe?
Well, there certainly, you know, there's no rush on this, meaning there's no urgency, but I'm sure that village council would like to get this in place. Do so. So.
December. Can you, that would give you guys, two and a half weeks to think about it, ask any other questions, and then? Yep, I made a note of that.
Does this one have, the village have to have 100% of that level surveys? Oh, okay, I was just gonna read.
This is more or less a windshield survey.
Okay. That's one or something else.
Took pictures. This was, this is not, not an income survey. This is based on property, conditions, values, age of the housing, all of those things are contained, contained in the housing survey. So it isn't about income, it's more about condition of properties.
So if it's all right with you guys, anything you want prior to the December meeting, just let me know, and I'll find out what the answers for you. I'll give you a copy of the survey.
Do you have one?
I think I do.
If not?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I do have. And a copy of the resolution, I have that too, I think. Didn't you send me that?
Yes. You should have received one today.
Yeah, from your secretary.
So to be clear, Ohio revise code requires that you are presented a copy of the housing survey and the proposed legislation, which is the village ordinance, and you look that over. So it is not a repeat, you don't have to support it, but if you do, I would recommend a board resolution of support.
I'll put those mailed out to you tomorrow, and then you can look them over, and if you're all okay with it, then we'll put that on the December agenda, which is, I think, December 11. So that'll be before you know it. That'd be all right, Jerry?
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay. So we'll know one way or another on that night.
Very good. If you have any questions, just give me a call.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, she just, Steph just said no. Eric, Eric was going to be here tonight to report on his investigation on the solar field, and I kind of have a little bit in my report on that because he does such an amazing job of researching everything. And, you know, I don't want to steal his thunder, and I wouldn't want to say, you know, some of the things that he told me today, because I'd probably get it wrong, but he's finding some interesting things out. Let me just say that. So I don't think we need to get too excited about a solar field, but he will, he hopes to have that information for you at the December meeting. So I called him today because he was hoping a guy was gonna come to be here tonight. He couldn't make it. I said, then don't bother coming here, just wait till December, we'll put you on the December meeting. So we should have more information on that too. Okay? So we'll move on to principal reports. Kristen, we'll actually start in a few.
October 24th and 26th, our third grade students completed their first round of state assessments for the third grade guarantee. Huge thanks out to Rachel Mann in Wiskerna with her help making sure that we provided the correct accommodations for the kiddos, and a special thanks to the teachers for schedule changes and accommodating those as well. I didn't really talk to the boys to see what they're presenting, so hopefully we'll not. On November 8th, we conducted a, our lockdown drill for students and teachers, secure the classroom. This is a state mandated drill that we have to do, and as of today, everything's been turned into the state. We are, we have met the requirements for, like, getting a fire drill in and this lockdown drill in. On the 10th, we had our veteran state program. We had about 80 guests. We provided basically free programs for them, and I'm sure they'll talk more on their end, but we had breakfast at 8:30, and this year we provided a more meal. And then at nine o'clock, we invited the K4 students down, and I always like to utilize that time as a teaching moment for the students. But a huge thanks to McDonald's for providing us a discount on sausage McMuffins. Ruthann, Peirman, and her crew for providing the rest of the food. Eric Bassett and his staff for setting everything up after basketball practice, so I could get over here and put the table decorations on. And just, again, students and teachers for their flexibility with schedule changes, because it takes a crew to put a successful program together. November 17th and 18th, students of grade four through six presented Aladdin Junior. Our students represented Hicksville well. Huge thanks goes out to Mr. Olson and all the hard work that he put into it. He did a great job for, especially for being a first-year as elementary, because his concentration is more on their school. Friday, we will be having our second principal's math club dance party. This is a great time to have parents, a lot of parents come in and have lunch with their child. And right now, we have 71 participants, so that's awesome. We're doing great things here, it's very obvious. People keep reaching out and asking us to share what's going on here at Hicksville. And last Monday, Mr. Slattery and I traveled over to Ottawa Elementary and presented for K8 teachers during their in-service, and Mr. Hunter held down the fort here. So, but Mr. Slattery did a great job. I made, I made the presentation look pretty, and he, he brought it to life. So.
Something like that.
He did a great job. He spoke for almost two hours, so he did a great job. I'd rather put that PowerPoint on. On December 4th, we will be hosting a morning assembly about the rainforest. This is a free program that they're bringing to us. It will explain how energy, conservation, and recycling can help save the animals of the rainforest, and then that evening, they'll be traveling over to Antwerp, and tickets will be $5 at the door, but those that come can actually hold some of these animals that they will be bringing. So I'm sure you're gonna have some excited students here, so. That's off the elementary.
I love the addition of the, maybe it wasn't an addition, but I love the video of the veterans walking down through the hall with the kids, bordering on those, that was.
That was really neat.
That was really neat. Whoever's idea that was, that was.
You know, I try to be creative sometimes.
I was like, that might.
I don't know where that came from, but.
It was really neat.
Yeah, we actually had quite, I had a few letters that were sent to us, an email, and people saw me on the street, they said that was.
It was.
The best part of it. But I mean, it took all three of us to do it, though, because when you're trying to get, you know, 560 kids just in our end, let alone the other 450 on there, and all do the same thing, exact same time, the logistics is amazing, and it wasn't easy, but it was cool.
It's really neat. Nice. And he got to practice putting flags together.
Yeah, I didn't realize the flags were gonna come to my house disassembled.
[laughing].
So Slattery, Slattery slayed a chain, we did a lot that.
Had a wife party.
Probably the first we seen. Yeah. Cheap labor.
Sorry.
No, it's all right, it was funny. Open up the box, and I'm like, oh, this isn't good. And that was the night before, about.
Yep. Yes.
Do you have anything else, Kristen?
No.
Thank you. Any questions, Kristen? All right, me again?
I'll try to avoid doubling up on things. October 27th, we had our student, the quarter luncheon, I know it's a while ago, but thanks to FWT for providing the food for all of our students. We included fifth and sixth grade this year with the middle school. It was very much appreciated from Mrs. Neon and Mrs. Dosselman. It's a great way to recognize a lot of different kids for doing a lot of really neat things in our school, so it's something I think is a pretty cool thing that we do here. So thank you to everybody involved. Just talking about Veterans Day Assembly, I'm sure Jeff will too, it was a pretty cool assembly this year. The five through 12 side, we really tried to focus on having our kids do a lot of the work, or be very involved. You know, NHS kids greeted them and walked them down the hallway. We had a student who put together a video tribute for the veterans, and they got to play that for everybody. The choir, the band sang, we had different speakers get up and give tribute. So it was a lot of student-driven things, which I think was a really neat part of it from our side. And again, the ending, we kind of set them all up with the flags, it was pretty neat. So it was a good, successful Veterans Day Assembly. Thank you to all that were involved with that. November 20th, 98.1 was out here in the freezing cold weather on Monday morning with our kickoff for Christmas for kids. We've got a great organization that's doing some great things in our community. If you would like to donate, we have bins outside of both offices that kids can fill up with toys and gifts to, to give to the meeting. The 21st of November, we had our fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade spelling meet. It was, did a great job to everyone who participated, and I make everyone come down and watch it. That's nerve-wracking, to have these fifth and sixth graders to stand in front of their peers and spell, and geez, they were impressive, young, young ladies and gentlemen. So a great job to all who participated. Our fifth and sixth grade champion was Adeline Crawford, a fifth grader, and the runner-up was Jocelyn McClish, and the seventh, eighth grade champion was Emily Harmon, and the runner-up was Jacob Evans. All four of those kids will actually move on to the Defiance County Spelling Meet in January, and will compete with all of our local schools. So good luck to each and every one of them. November 17th and 18th, I know she mentioned it, but again, congratulations to the cast and crew of Aladdin Junior, they did a really nice job. We have some pretty talented actors and. We have some pretty talented actors and actresses and some great singers. So a great show put on by everybody. Just a few upcoming events. Winter sports season starts tomorrow for the middle school. Keep us busy, so good luck to all of our winter sports teams that are competing. Friday, December 1st, we will have our midterm. So again, be sure to check online, check on those grades and see how you're doing. We're about halfway through the summer menus already. Monday, December 11th, Kirsten kind of mentioned that, you know, those are great things that people want to see at the wall. Monday, December 11th, Nathan Farrell presented STEM to you guys last year. I don't know if you guys remember that presentation. Well, since then, we've changed to STEAM. It's now science, technology, engineering, art, and math. So I feel like social studies is just getting left out, but that's all right. STEAM is again, this new program that we have here, it's been pretty successful, some of the things that the kids are doing. And a lot of people are actually going to come check that out. On December 11th, we're anticipating about 30 different other schools who are looking at starting this STEM program. Business members who are kind of wanting to share their opinions of what they would like to see out of future employees, as well as community members who have helped fund this. This is entirely community-driven and funded after our schools. So we will be putting that on December 11th for a lot of different people. So again, I think it's a great opportunity to show off some of the things that we are doing here as a school. We've got some neat things happening. Nathan sent something for me to kind of show you guys, to show off, but I literally couldn't explain it to you if I tried, so I thought I didn't go in there. But they're doing some really neat things in the classroom. I've enjoyed watching that kind of grow and take shape. Sixth grade camp is coming up at the end of December. It'll be my first trip to Camp Ashindo, so excited about that. And we will have a band and choir concert, I guess we have a board meeting before that, but band and choir concert December 15th. So those are some of our upcoming events.
Okay, is the thing on December 11th set during the day time?
During the day, yep. We're going to have, again, they're going to come in and kind of see what the kids are doing in the classroom. It's a quarter-by-quarter class, so some of our first quarter students who had some pretty cool projects are actually going to come down and present them and show the people what they've created, what they've done, how they've made some of these things work. And there's some pretty impressive projects that kids are doing and to show them off to some people, so.
Will that be in the LMC or where is that going to be at?
It'll be in Nathan's class as well as the LMC.
Okay.
That is. I love the program, but you brought out a point I didn't think about. Something always has to suffer, something else happens. Social studies doesn't really get.
I was just kidding. They keep adding, you know, science, technology, engineering, and math. And now they add art and it's just, it's getting bigger and bigger. Now I.
That's valid, that's valid point. Because it's important too.
We do, we do a lot. It's a really neat program that they put on there, so.
Forward the information to the members of the spread board so that if we're available, we can actually come in and get it to.
Okay, great. That'd be awesome.
Yes, Jeff.
Powerpoint presentation ready? Two hours of my time. Here we go. Ready? No. I feel odd that I'm going this far back, but I was just talking to Mr. Hunter to make sure my dates were correct. Our last board meeting was like on October 8th. And I was going through my notes and I'm like, my goodness, you know, we had parent teacher conferences a week after, or that's the same week as our last board meeting. So our parent teacher conferences, K-12, that went over very well. Had a lot, a lot of people in the building, which is great. It's nice to, to see all the young students and their families here who are making strides on getting more of the older population in here. We're trying to get the, the high school students, the middle school students to have like class meetings and other activities, try to draw all the parents in. And I know we had two class meetings that night, which definitely improved our, you know, the number of people walking through our building, which is always nice because if they're walking through here, they're going to stop and speak with the teachers. So that went off very well. And of course, we did not have school on the 13th on Friday. And then of course, again, odd to say this, but October 13th was homecoming, which seems like forever ago, but it was prior to the last board meeting. I want to congratulate our homecoming corps. And of course, I always want to give a special shout out to our local police department and the Hicksville Office of Fire Department for leading the way through the community. And it's always a great event and no one does like Hicksville. That's all I got to say about that. We always do a great job. It's always a huge event and the community really does look forward to it. Our, our district teacher in-service, when we didn't have school on the 16th, I know Kirsten hit this, we kind of covered some of our lockdown procedures with our staff. We try to practice as much as possible to make sure they understand what the expectations are. And we did appreciate that the, again, Hicksville PD and Fire Department came in to kind of walk through those lockdown procedures to have better understanding of what we're doing here to prepare for such an event. We have the Northwest Ohio Student Leadership Conference on October 18th. We had eight students from Hicksville, grades nine through 12, that also participated in that. And I brag about our kids wherever I go. And I will say this, the expectation we set, they always, they always tend to achieve that expectation. We're the best-looking bunch there and I don't care what Bill says. Our ladies and our, and our guys, they show up just to the nines and we appreciate that as an admin team and a staff and a school. Because when they walk through that door, people see them and they talk about it. I mean, it comes up every year how nice Hicksville's kids look and how nice of a job they do representing our school. And Sarah Contreras, she was actually selected as a speaker that day. She had some great comments that were part of the discussion. And there, you know, there's 32 different schools there, eight kids from your school plus your, your guidance counselors, your administrators, your, your Defiance College representatives. I mean, there's 300 some people there, so for that young lady to get up and speak in front of everyone, it was very impressive. Mrs. Leon, the interview's round one was completed on October 19th. The second, excuse me, the first round was the second group. They'll go through that in the spring. We'll take the top five from each group. They will then have like a semifinal round in April. And then I believe in early May, we will then have our final round and we'll select the winner. Mr. Polmeyer and the middle school, high school band and choir had their fall performance. Everyone did a great job there. On the 8th of November, we had our, our two-hour teacher in-service. I recovered that, I apologize. On the 10th of November, we had our Veterans Day Assembly. And I want to commend Kirsten, you know, she's kind of the glue for that. I want to give her props for that. We're just a couple of guys that are going, oh my gosh, we've never created an event like this before, you know, it's new to us. And she gave us a lot of guidance on that, so we appreciate all your help. And she does, she makes us look good. You know, we, we have a lot of good ideas, but it doesn't look very nice on paper. She kind of cleans it up for us and gives us a little bit more direction. And we do appreciate all your extra help on that because of you. But I will say that I think when it came to personally, and I'm sure Mr. Hunter and I, we had this conversation. Personally, I felt like it was, it was a great event from, from the beginning to the end. And I, and I will say that when they were leaving, that's, I mean, and if you watched the video, and I apologize, that's my personal phone. I was just taking the video. And, you know, I said hi to my dad, my grandfather and all these vets. And I remember Frank Thomasso came up and he said, this was awesome. And I believe Mr. Bell, he came up and he would really appreciate it. So there was just a lot of great comments from them. Dick Savage, can't forget old Dick, of course, but he, he sent a really nice letter that I need to share with the staff and everyone. But it was just, it was, it was very overwhelming to have that response, you know, because we're doing it for them, but to hear the appreciation back from them, that, that made it a better experience for everyone involved. So again, all, all our veterans deserve it and we're looking forward to doing it again next year. I want to say congratulations to all of our fall sports teams. We had a lot of success this year in the fall. I mean, our cross-country team did great, the individual runners advanced to state and placing. I don't know what said this, but I believe Michael finished 26th, or excuse me, 45th overall. And then Michael, I think he finished 14th or 15th overall. And I mean, I think that's, they placed better in state than they did in regional, so they had a really good day. And it was just really exciting for our community and all the families down there. They're so proud of those two. So then of course, our football team, and they won the GMCs, advanced in the playoffs and that was great. Our girls volleyball team was very competitive this year. They had a nice season. And, you know, our golf team, the girls, they won sectionals and advanced on the districts. And that was also very exciting. So again, it was, it was a very exciting fall sports season for Hicksville. Another thing I want to say, and I'm going to apologize now because I'm not going to get everyone in this, but, you know, we support our kids not just with their school activities, but their other school activities. And this year, and I'm going to say this, I hope this sounds right, I had the honor of being invited to three different Eagle Scout. Award banquet or award nights, okay? And I did realize that, you know, John Kisecki, Andrew Carrier, and Ethan Wilholm, the three that invited me to these awards. I've never been invited to an Eagle Scout award banquet before. So I would really appreciate it. Problem was, two of them were on Thanksgiving weekend and I was out of town in East Harris, Ohio for my immolts, families from. But, you know, you want to talk about an honor of earning an Eagle Scout award, I just think those kids deserve to be recognized for that because that's quite an accomplishment. A lot of time and effort into that. It's a, for them, it's a lifetime achievement for them considering their age and what they've accomplished. Future events, the high school musical additions will begin tomorrow. And I believe the second round is on a Saturday. The high school musical does not begin or will not take place until I believe March, but it's about a three or four month process to get these kids ready for this program. And it's always a good one here at Hicksville. Of course, Mr. Hunter hit the second quarter midterms of this Friday. I want to point out that our new staff is going to the Ryan Clark Academy and that's all I'm going to say about that, because I'm sure you have something to say. And then of course, we have some fall testing going on on our side of the building for the end, of course, assessments of graduation. And I try to fill you guys in with some small updates of the way the state changes, the expectations for graduation each year. And with this new expectation of alternate pathways, that way they're lowering the standard, we have a group of students that will be receiving test prep remediation throughout the month of December and early part of January prior to taking the government tests and the fall slash winter testing window. We're hoping that they're all successful at that time. If they are not, they will have the opportunity to retest in the spring. Because what's funny about that government test is it's all for senior year this year. And we want to get the results back until like July. And considering we have commencement like the first week of June, we need to know whether or not they pass these tests and are at these points. So we're doing our best to prepare our kids and of course, to congratulate. One other item on this, and again, not to prolong this discussion of, and of course, assessments and expectations. It's important to understand that we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. And I spoke to the staff at our last in-service about the expectations of the state. And what they've done now is, in the past, any student that's on an IEP, which is Individualized Education Plan, these students are typically known as special education students, they are required to take these state intercourse assessments. If you have a special needs student taking the math test and they are required to have accommodations and modifications in that area and they're not able to pass it, last year, the state said, well, they receive a three, no matter what. That way they can meet the total point requirements in the, in the individual math area and overall so that they can graduate. Well, now they come back to say, well, any kid that's on an IEP that does not retake the test and pass them, they'll graduate. They can walk at commencement, get a diploma, but when you get your statistics on your grade card, they do not count as a graduate. The only way we can avoid that is to unfortunately, take every kid that's on an IEP for math and language arts, unexempt them, which by the way, last year, we brought in all these parents and told them how their kids would be exempted and had all these meetings and told them that it'd be fine, everything's going to be great, they're going to graduate and earn a diploma. But they want us to unexempt them, have the meeting with the parents, try to explain to them why now they must retake the test. And if they don't pass the test, which, and I'm not trying to be rude, but, you know, some potentially could, a lot of them may not. They will then have to do an alternate pathway, which is creates a whole nother Rubik's Cube of events. But what's odd is they're making us choose between indicators, as they're called. So we could just keep doing what we're doing and take the hit on graduation rate, or we can unexempt these kids, have them all retest in these different areas. And now all these indicators for math and science, algebra one, geometry, ELA one, ELA two, math one, math two, these kids who have already struggled with these areas, potentially would retake those areas and potentially fail again. And now what the effect it has on our school is all those indicators, we pass more indicators than anybody in our area. Okay? Most of those tests only pass by one or two kids. And now you're taking seven kids that did not pass ELA one, they're freshman year, that are seniors now, hey, if you take the same test four years later, chances are those seven kids aren't going to pass it again. So what's it going to do to all our indicators? We're going to fail all those indicators potentially. So what I'm trying to say is this, at my OASSA conference and my GMC principal conferences or meetings, we're trying to decide what's best for the kids and the teachers and the school. And, and our, and a majority of us, not all of us, because there's no right answer, a majority of us are stating that we're going to take the hit on the graduation rate and not put these families and these kids through five, six extra tests their senior year, not because the teachers, the teachers' evaluations are tied to these test scores, our grade card, I mean. So it is a mess and it's unfortunate. And the, and the problem is, it's going to change you next year, we're not actually expecting. But chances are, typically, we may have one kid that's not graduating a year. So we're typically at that 96, 97, 98% graduation rate. We could be.
By their choosing.
By their choosing.
Yeah, right, by the state's choosing.
No, no. Typically, we have a kid, typically, we have a kid that drops out, I guess they're GD.
Okay.
But with this situation here, I unfortunately, I think we have the unfortunate position of being in the 80, 85% range, which that's an F for graduation rate. So if we get four or five kids on IEPs, plus your typical GD kid dropping out, that's five or six kids at roughly, you know, potentially 1.8, 2.4% per kid. I just want you guys to be aware of that, so.
It's really easy to explain that as well, looking back at the graduation rate.
I don't think you, I don't think you have a choice if that's a decision that feels best for the district. With the kids, I mean, I don't know much about it, but it sounds right.
Because if I called Debbie Vetter and said, Debbie, by the way, last year at that meeting, we exempted your kid, he did his best on those tests. He did not do well. We're going to exempt him the rest of the way. He's going to graduate, he's going to do everything else he's supposed to do. And all of a sudden, less than a year later, I call you and say, hey, by the way, I apologize, things have changed. That's going to irritate parents. And now this kid that's expat, you say one government test, now it's six government tests, ELA one, ELA two, the algebra one and the geometry test potentially.
And they won't pass them.
And they probably, probably won't pass any of them.
And do you have the time for the logistics that that requires? I mean, you know, in an honest question, in an honest, in an honest question, I mean, you've still got time, you've still got logistics you have to deal with. Can that even be accomplished and be fair to the student?
It was, it's not the, it's not the smart thing to do.
Okay.
Personally speaking, or even financially speaking as a district. I think we just, we suffer punches in the back and we take a hit on our graduation rate.
So if we take the hit on the graduation rate, aren't there going to be other schools in this area and in the state that are going to be doing the exact same thing?
There are.
Which is going to make it a little easier to explain.
Some are going to go that route, some are going to, are going to go the other way. So it'd be nice if they'd all do the same thing. That way, everybody would have similar score.
I can't imagine.
And I want to, I want to, and I want to add one more thing to this, there are schools that are going to retest their IEP kids, but I want to, I want to point something else out, these alternate pathways. If you retest the kids, that's just step one in this process. Pull these kids off their IEP to retest them. If they don't pass those scores, get that minimum score in that column area of math plus the overall total waiting points, there's like nine or 10 options. They have to complete two of those nine options. And one of those is attendance. Well, I hate to say this, but a lot of the kids we're talking about have poor attendance. So they're not going to reach the 93% attendance rate. so they're not going to reach the ninety-three percent attendance rate. It's like two hundred and fifty hours community service, voluntary community service, that's not going to happen. Uh, it's a minimum of two point five GPA, I apologize, that's probably not going to happen. You know, the, the work youth program, which isn't an option here, that's a four-point person issue, I mean, it, it just doesn't make sense to spend so much time and effort and stress out about this, it's better off just to say, you know, what are our graduation rate? Even though, even though they all didn't pull them, remember that, the state's going to give them a diploma, they're going to walk at commencement, and the state's going to say, they, they, yeah, you're right, they graduated, but on your grade report card, they didn't. That's what they're going to say to us.
That's crazy.
And that's, that's pretty accurate, your understanding, correct? What's going to explain to you guys at Ryan, so.
And really, all you can say is it's the state, you can't make logic out of everything they do. Well, I was trying to be nice, but I understand where you're coming from.
All right, one last thing, and this is, this is ending on a positive note. Um, Hicksville Schools has been recognized by the state. For our value-added improvements, because we all know that, um, the last couple of years, our state report card and our scores or indicators were not the best. In fact, we were actually towards probably the lower quarter of schools in probably the Florida, Six County area. Um, last year we went to pretty much number one in the area, there was one of the schools that their index was higher than ours, but they never had any teachers pass, we passed just as many. Um, so the minimum award recognizes our growth and our value-added scores, and, uh, the state sent us a nice letter congratulating us on our efforts. And, of course, we want to congratulate, um, your entire advocacy team, all of your teachers and the efforts they've put into our short-cycle assessments, our short-cycle, uh, or the, the essential questions and everything that we're doing to prepare our kids, uh, for the end-of-course assessments, the test prep, everything we're doing. So hopefully we continue to have success. All right, awesome.
Jeff, you know what it boils down to, we got a great, we got a great teaching staff, classified staff, the administration's great here. We just got to ignore when some of that stuff comes out of the newspapers with those testing, because that's not what we're about, and that's not what we're here for, with the kids, with their education. And sometimes we have to just, that's why I'm not, I don't get really excited when test scores are really high, and I don't get excited when they're real low, because at the end of the day, it's not what, it's not what we're really doing for the kids and what, and what we're helping the kids come out of this school district with, and.
We don't have time to talk about that.
A lot of times it seems like it's more about bragging rights, you know, than anything else. We bragged a lot this year. Yeah. No, the only thing that concerns me about the graduation rate, because I had zero phone calls about our, our test scores last year when they were dumped, so I had zero phone calls congratulating us this year. But I will say that, um, when you have new families coming into your district and they're checking out the schools, that's the one thing.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, there's no question that's, that's the downside of it.
So if anyone has any, uh, any questions for local business owners or businesses, factories, then they, tell them to come visit us and come talk to us. Don't just let them look at the computer and see a poor score if they're graduating.
Well, this year we were ranked fifty-second in the state, so that's pretty good.
Yes.
You just keep that one on the website.
That's all right. Go ahead, please.
I was just going to say, since Jeff brought it up, I'm going to brag a little bit on our boys. Um, so the Boy Scouts of, of our senior class, there, we actually have eight Boy Scouts who have earned their Eagle rank, some of them of which are seniors here, one of them was homeschooled. But only four to five percent of boys who enter Boy Scout actually make it to Eagle Scout, so those A-boys really are quite outstanding and amazing young men, so it is really.
I wish they would have had that all together when they did it, because, you know, I was excited to go to John's and AJ's, I forget who else was there, John invited me.
So John, AJ.
Yeah, there's a lot of them.
Brandon, five.
Yeah. I didn't even know anything about Andrew and Ethan, and I was out of town this weekend too in Chicago for Christmas for our family up there, so I missed the one here, but it would have been nice if they did them all together, because it is quite an accomplishment thing.
Especially, I mean, when you consider it as a truth that we've had eight this year.
Yeah. Impressive.
It is.
Yeah, I was just going to comment that I thought it was great that you recognized the Scouts, I thought that was, uh, that was very appropriate, and I wanted to thank Kirsten for her hard work with veterans, so I think that's, that's a very neat thing to do, so, thank you.
Do a PowerPoint for Jeff, that'll be shorter.
Yeah, we're going to put you on that every board meeting.
Sixteen minutes, Dave.
Kirsten, five minutes, Jeff, yes, come on, you're in charge.
One screen.
That would be on the Crystal's report, remember that. That was a safe report. That's good stuff to know, though, I mean, you know, especially down the line, we start wondering why whatever happens, you know, we have a little bit of a heads up.
Heads up, we're not necessarily as special as the state will allow. Um, we will move on to Fort County's agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Um, good, good things at Fort County, actually, did a five-year forecast here, our meeting was a couple weeks ago, and everything for the Fort County District looks passage out of W a year ago, the school looks financially well. Um, the Finance Committee, the Maintenance Committee, and, and Connie Nicely and, and Tim Meister, um, they have been working, and they're actually working on some grants for those AC units that we're talking about, and it's still in preliminary stages, but there may be a possibility we might be able to figure out a way to do all these things at one time. Um, so that, that would be, that would be good, we can get all this done once, it's the staggered amount. Um, and then, uh, this was the month that all the teachers that went and did their summer service jobs that they did, they come back and there was about five or six of them that give a report on what they do. And then the one last thing I have is, Doug, head of the Adult Education Program over there at Fort County, he is constantly getting national recognition for the firemen and rescue training services that they do, and it is unbelievable how far, far Fort County contracts out for people that come in, you know, from other states for training there, because it's so recognized. And they have a whole, Fort County has a whole facility up in Toledo that's full-time with, uh, for adult ed, for environments training and, uh, um, emergency service personnel. Um, they just do an unbelievable job with that, and it's, it's really something to go see, and those classes are constantly full. And, and so, and the recertification on that's a very big deal, very difficult thing, and, uh, we just passed it again, and they say no one passes it the first time, Doug almost passes it every time, first time. So, so just good things going on in Fort County, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Three teachers, right? Andrew Gehagan, Kelly Vanmore, and?
Christopher Olson.
Who?
Christopher Olson.
Oh, Christopher Olson, right, yeah. So they'll be heading down for that training that we always send our first-year teachers to, they're excited about that, I'm sure. Uh, also, big thanks to Jeff and Kirsten for going to Ottawa Elementary, they had contacted us, uh, several months ago about that, Audrey did, the principal, and then I invited her over here because I wanted her to see our school before they came over and talked to the, uh, to her and her staff about, um, you know, some of the things that we do. And, you know, sometimes just walking through our building and seeing all the pictures and, and hearing about some of the things that we do ahead of time, kind of, uh, helped, helped her understand a lot. I talked to her about, uh, some of the finance part of how we do some of the things that we do here, and she was appreciative of that, so thanks you guys for going over and doing that for us. Uh, they also mentioned the lockdown that we had, and, uh, and a big thanks to the EMS, the fire, and the police that came and helped us that day. Uh, it's amazing when you do that, and you know that there's, uh, with teachers and students and everybody that's in the building, there's probably between eleven hundred and twelve hundred people in this building, and you do not hear a basal, not one, not one, you don't hear anything, do we?
You actually forget to let people out.
Yes. We didn't, we didn't beat Gail this year, that's right.
You forgot the title teachers and, uh, there was another one on that side.
I think it was just the title teachers.
No, we found out later. Oh, I forgot, we, uh, the library. I got a email that night. I'm later.
She just came out that night?
Students tried to get into the library and they were still locked in there.
Well, the, the rule, uh, is that you do not come out of the lockdown until an administrator comes in and actually unlocks the door. So, you know, one year we forgot Gail, they were in the bathroom for like over an hour. I couldn't have to be a better person.
Yeah.
Neola, we typically have, um, policies that we approve in December, I think it's usually December or January, one or the other. But John Kaler, our Neola representative, is under the weather here this fall, so, so we're running a tad late. I have a meeting set up with him on Friday to go over the ones that I have waiting in my office, he always comes and we go over them together first. Once we do them, I'll get them to you guys next week, but I'm not going to push to, to have that, uh, approved in December. It's nothing that has to be done in December, we'll hold it off till January, that'll give you plenty of time to look that over and review those policies. So that will happen next week. Uh, I kind of already mentioned a little bit about Eric and, and why he's not here tonight, so there's really no reason to go on that anymore, he will be here next week, or next meeting with the report on the solar lab, the solar project as a general. And then, uh, our work session that we had in Columbus, I really, uh, since we've gotten back, which it really was only like two weeks ago, uh, haven't done anything with the things that you asked me to do, but I have that list right on my desk, and I'll get working on that and get that information too. The only one I wanted to mention that I just felt we should, they're out there, maybe we should maybe talk about it in, in new business, is the potential of changing the start date of school. So if we could maybe put that on for new business and just have a slight discussion about that at the end. Um, other than that, I think that's all I have. If there's any questions for me.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda, are there any items that you suggest to be removed?
Um, I think we need to add the minutes from the work session in November to all people to be tried at two, because they're in here, they just were not at that little notification, not put in there, but I just missed that.
So make it one B or something.
So like, under minutes, just put another one, um, minutes from the work session, a meeting on November twelve.
Yeah, do a one B.
Any others, changes suggested? All right, so I need a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, Karen.
I'll slide it.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Carrier?
Yes, Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero, moving into events and financials, a motion, please. All right, so the minutes from the regular board meeting on October ninth and the minutes from our work session on November twelve.
Right.
Any questions over those?
No?
All right. So treasures report?
Um, just a couple little things, um, we did submit the application to the EPA and we got back from our, um, capital conference, um, for a twenty thousand dollar grant, um, we were only able to apply for one because of the way the stipulations were that you have a fleet of under a hundred and then you can only apply for one. So we did, found the information that we needed and sent that off, so hopefully we hear back to them fairly soon. Um, income tax, um, we're kind of at the same place that we were with net collections, we're still at twenty-seven percent up from what we were at the same time last year, so that's a good thing. Um, gross collections are up to approximately seven to eight percent. Um, I think that would be the reason for that twenty-seven percent increase in net collections is due to the refunds, are, are still down tremendously, so that's a good thing. Um, and I had sent out the treasures update, I sent you guys some spreadsheets, I don't know if that was helpful at all, but.
It was.
Okay, good. Um, so just trying to go through the pie graphs and kind of highlight some items that were, you know, looked a little higher than normal, and just kind of give some explanation for that. Um, other interest and open enrollment, um, special educa, or special ed tuition and open enrollment receipts from ODE are up from what they were last year. Um, under advances and transfers, um, we talked about that last month, with there being some, um, monies that had come in from three funds of prior year expenditures. And expenses under other, um, I sent you, I guess I did send you, I don't think, the email that came from Jill Little, the Defiance County Auditor, but she had basically stated that, yes, she's now collecting for REA, um, fees, and what she hasn't done for the last year and a half, so I'm not exactly sure, and I needed to give some clarification on that myself, but, yeah, I was kind of surprised at the, the difference, because I think we were talking like six thousand, I mean, it's significant, I can change, so I need to get that confirmed. Transfers for the debt service, uh, just basically the adjustments for all the tru-ups that they do for the foundation payments. And, um, when we were looking at the expenses by function, basically the way it increased for the transportation was due to the, um, the purchases of the Ford Transit and Chevy Malibu, because those came out of general fund. Um, and just as an FYI, uh, the credit card had been compromised a little bit earlier this year, um, those monies have been refunded back to us, so that's been taken care of, thankfully, and the only other thing was licensure, and just so that you guys all know, because I, I think I've tried to talk to you guys, but not sure, um, and I did get some clarification. Basically, ODE has come down and said that, hey, we'll help you wow, and now no longer do you have to have a long-term sub, so they're trying to be helpful. Um, say you have a maternity leave, you no longer have to have a long-term sub in that area especially, you can get away with a short-term sub, but the way that the legislation is written is that they can only be put into a given classroom for like a sixty-day period for the entire school year, so should they turn around and, and, so we have to kind of keep track, and, and I was talking to Kirsten about this today, because she had a, a girl in there talking about, um, subbing for a maternity leave. Basically, if somebody has come in and they fulfill sixty days in one classroom, they can't come back, so if they fulfill that maternity leave and say that individual baby is sick and, and they need another sub, we have to somehow figure out how we figure out A-SOP, or how we, how do we do it that they do not come in and fulfill sixty-one days or more? Because if they do, they won't get paid. Because I can't, you know what I mean? I can't pay it out, because otherwise it comes out of my nickel personally. So, ODE is trying to be helpful.
It is, it is really asinine, I'm going to say that in public, what they're doing, because for us to keep track now, like, Emily Sinter just started her maternity leave, so the person we have in there has a certificate that we're talking about, she cannot work more than sixty days in that room. Now, she can work more than sixty days in the district, but she cannot work more than sixty days in that room.
But she's already been in that room.
So if she's already been in that room, those days count towards the sixty.
That really helps the kids out.
Yeah.
I think they were trying to be, I don't know if she needs to be in there.
So then she's a long-term sub and not a short-term sub, so.
It depends on if she's applied for the long-term sub, because there's two certifications, that she has to apply for a long-term certi, certificate if she wants to be a long-term sub.
So she, you can be one, one sub, you can be sixty days in one room, sixty days in another room, sixty days.
Yeah, they could be here all year, but they can't be in the same classroom for more than sixty days, doesn't, and it doesn't say consecutive, because I was thinking it was going to be like consecutive days.
Can we not make it their responsibility?
Who?
The individual employee teacher?
Well, I'm not sure.
I mean, why, why can't they be responsible for saying either fifty-eight days?
Will A-SOP track that? I would think A-SOP.
I would think we. The only thing, I turned and talked to Anita today, we were kind of just tossing it around, I was like, oh, yeah, by the way, um, I don't know if we can go into A-SOP and somehow check the box that, for that individual teacher that they do, that they would not or could not have that individual in that classroom, but if it's a long-term sub.
You can, you can set it up that way.
I don't know how A-SOP exactly works all day.
But I don't know if that'll count the days.
Yeah, I don't think it'll count the days. That, so it gets, so, you know, in the treasures office, we're always lagging behind, we're getting, you know what I mean, we're getting slips, we don't know who's in what room ever, but we're getting slips, saying, okay, here's pay slips, well, if they've already met their sixty days, I can't pay out for sixty-one, sixty-two, and sixty-three, even though they've.
Yeah, we're going to have to have a conversation about that, because that's going to happen. If it doesn't happen here, it's going to happen in some district, I'm sure. And that's not, that can't, I don't know what they're going to do, because you cannot not pay that person, but if she pays it, it comes out of her personal money.
That they, you can't, you can't.
I, A-SOP tracks it. I just pull up the report and it shows an alphabetical order by our subs, the days that they've subbed.
But in each classroom.
But that, but that's the thing, it's like, at least it's a breakdown, for example, sub A right here has subbed, uh, let's say, well, this is a year.
So can you look at, like Nancy Swift, who's going to be in for?
Well, yeah, I wouldn't say anybody, that's what I'm saying, sub A. Sub A has subbed, it looks like roughly twenty days, and it says exactly what classroom they were at each time.
Okay.
So I mean, if I look at this and I see there's twenty, uh, twenty substitute days that sub A has completed, then I just have to say, okay, well, sub A needs to sub for a maternity leave, how many days have they spent in that time? It's easy, one day, all right, they have fifty-nine days available, and every time they sub in there, it's a chronological order, the days that they sub to.
Okay, so then you guys will have to, somebody will have to notify, or somehow notify somebody. Do you know what I mean, we're going to have to come up with a system as to who notifies who, how is it taken care of, because the treasures office, we're always the last to know who's where, we don't know until.
But you have to understand, you're talking about outlier situation here, I mean, if you have a maternity leave.
Right.
You know, that's, that's one person to worry about, because most of your teachers aren't going to miss more than five, six days.
Right, and I, and I guess I just think, like, say somebody's out for maternity leave, Right, and I, and I guess I just think, like, say somebody's out for maternity leave throughout for, a lot of times anymore, 12 weeks. They come back and now you've got, I don't know, three months down the road, that position opens up again. Somehow we're just going to have to put something in the system, somehow we're going to have to track it. I don't know what the answer is as of now, because I don't know how AESOP exactly works, but we'll have to figure out, how do we then say, okay, this person has to move?
I guess, I think that, that one or two people a year, that should be fairly easy to recognize and track. I don't, I don't see it being a major problem.
I just, I mean, I just think that it's crazy to get caught, you know?
But it's better than what it was, because we, we were replacing people every fifth day.
Every fifth day.
Trying to yank someone out every fifth day.
There you go, Andy, you have to look at the positive, right?
It's better than it was, it's better than it was. But I think when, you know, ODE or whoever comes up with that law, they should, and they said given classroom, I wish it would have maybe said consecutive days. Would have been nice, or something, so that then it's not really an issue of where can they sub, so it is what, it's better than what it was. So just kind of as an FYI there as to how that works, so...
I got a question. On page thirty, special instructions thirteen percent and support services is eleven percent. Do those, at least kind of true by function, okay? Do those two go together to a certain extent, or they just, they completely, I mean, I know they're two...
Which ones, are you talking support service and what else?
Yeah, the brown one and the, um, kind of purplish one there, the special instructions at thirteen percent. Do, I guess we're here where I need to with my question. Special instructions thirteen percent, where was we with that cost five years ago?
I would have to...
Yeah, I know, I understand, I don't expect you to have that, I'm just curious how much that is either increased, stayed the same, or a key, do you know?
Isn't the special instruction, um, move with the regular instruction?
No.
No.
No, it's a, it's a different function code, because if you look at this next sheet, like page thirty-one, it, that is how, that's, these are the numbers I plug in to create this chart.
I was just curious.
So as to, I mean, I could turn around and do some digging and see if I can find something to see what the differences are.
Yes, as far as what's classified or special is, is instruction, we're looking at our budget numbers. Everything else pretty well stayed the same percentage-wise. What I can't recall is special instruction and support services, what have they done over the last five, seven years? Have they went up significantly, they haven't changed at all? As far as, as far as some of our deficit spending, or that we're at, is really, which is administration costs, all that stuff is percentage-wise of our budgets, pretty well remain the same since I've been on board.
Right.
I just don't remember what those two.
Yeah, I can turn around and pull some reports.
Reports would be the, uh, MW ESC portion.
Would W be special instruction?
Some, most of that would be the MW ESC, ESC.
The ESC part.
Isn't special instruction, the special ed department?
Yeah, you've got preschool in there, you've got...
That's your special ed department.
Okay, is that, is that what I thought?
Yeah, regular instruction, because if you look at the regular instruction, it's only forty-six percent, well, that's not...
Right, it's not right.
Not right. But if you add that to the thirteen percent, Denny, then you're looking at fifty-nine percent, plus the benef- uh, benefits, where's that at?
It's, it's not here, because this is just, this is like a whole, some like, okay, total special ed instruction.
That's the way I'm interpreting this chart.
I can turn around and get you something, it shouldn't be hard to get some reports for that.
I'm just curious with those two, I don't, I cannot recall those two groups I've done over the last five, seven years, as far as percentage of the budget. You know, has it went up quite a bit, has it stayed the same? I don't, I don't recall.
I don't either, did Homer have a breakdown with the special instruction, do you remember?
I, I don't recall.
I don't remember.
Might not even have that breakdown.
I don't, I don't recall.
Support services, I think, is always broken out.
Yeah. They should, and I think, like I said, I can get you hopefully some reports here. It would, I don't think it would be very hard to go back and kind of think about.
It would be interesting to see, you know, in the last five years, like Denny said, there's certain things that's relatively stayed the same percentage-wise. But where we can narrow down, okay, this is where our deficit's spending, or, or maybe this is not a part of it. Okay, now let's focus on this and what's going on.
Exactly, that's, exactly.
Yeah, Denny, great. I mean, part of that, we're talking about the ESDLs and IEC and all that kind of stuff, um, and I'm going to put ignorance the first couple of years, and now I kind of understand a little bit, because we were talking about the foundation. Okay, when we, we have certain individuals that are going off campus now, not just the IEC, just the behavioral unit, but in the last three years, we've had four more individuals going to the autism center at Defiance College and the autism center in Bryan. And when, when Homer was here, he always talked about, oh, they're on a, they're on Scott, there's a scholarship program, foundation scholarship, or he'd say something like that. So ignorance on my part, well, cool, there's a scholarship program, former snot coming out of our general fund. That right there, those four brand-new kids, I just want you to know, that's about a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year. Now they're receiving the services that they require, okay? Because we, academics side, we're, we're all about that. But when it comes to life after, at, you know, high school and, and learning how to live on your own and interact with, with, with people outside of school and, and potential job opportunities, that's what those two, uh, groups are doing, the autism center in Bryan and the age program at Defiance College. And then I will say that, uh, the IEC, behavioral unit, um, we kind of peaked, I just, I say last year we ate kids over there. I think we're down to six now. And again, those kids are earning twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars per kid, and there's no reverse funding for those kids. That's coming straight out of our...
Foundation.
Foundation.
But I understand and want those services all to happen, but as, as a district, we're doing some deficit spending. We at least have to understand where the additional cost is coming from, and then we can explain that to the community if and when we need to put a levy on. But it's our job as a board to try to understand where that's at and be able to give those explanations to the community, well, we got to ask for the extra money. And that's what I'm trying to get my line wrapped around, is we know wages and all that other stuff is pretty well stayed the same, at least eight years I've been on the board. But, but we're, our expenditures went up, which is fine, everybody, everything's going to go up expenditure-wise. But we got to look at what, which expenditures are going up the most and see if there's something we can do about it. And if not, then okay, we have justification to go and get a, to put a levy on it.
And I know those ancillary services that I'm talking about, they, they have gone up, and that's been, in my opinion, that's a large piece of the budget.
My, my guess is that's the answer right there, but I just can't remember what those numbers were before. Plus, things change on how it was, how it was categorized by the state too. Maybe how it was, you know, what category it went into five years ago might be a little bit different category than it is now, that could skew the numbers too.
I don't know how, I mean, I, I'd have to double-check, but I think probably a lot of, like, again, I'd have to turn around and double-check. But, you know, I think you also have stipends that are given out now, maybe that weren't there in the past for, you know, interventions and that type of thing. And I would think that, you know, I want to check and see what, what all goes into there before I say too much. But I mean, things change over time.
Right, right, they, they do.
Yeah.
So we just got to look at it as a board and see.
Go over there. Yeah, let me, I can turn around and try to get some stuff by, by the next meeting. Anything else?
Okay. Donations. Accepting the following donations. One hundred dollars from Lifeline Connect Baptist Church for girls' basketball. One hundred dollars from Stephen and Bobby Iris for girls' basketball. Three hundred dollars from Hicksville Athletic Boosters for girls' basketball. Three hundred dollars from FWT LLC for student of the quarter lunch. Three hundred and eighteen dollars from Northwest Ohio and Welch Trophy for cross-country. Four hundred dollars from Hicksville Athletic Boosters for cross-country. One thousand dollars from Hicksville PTO for the elementary principals' fund. And one thousand dollars from Margaret Camp for the elementary principals' fund. Discussion. Rule call please. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Yeah.
Always, always. Fantastic. I need a motion to move on. Thank you, Amanda, a second please. Thank you, Denny. Recommend to approve the following funds, uh, for the Hicksville Foundation, the whole school principal, the supply shop, one net connectivity for fiscal year seventeen, and one net connectivity for fiscal year eighteen. Discussion? No? Alright, rule call please. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Moving on to the employment of certified staff, a motion please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Karen. Jen first. Karen second. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for the 2017-2018 school year. Jamie Altman for junior high girls' track coach. Dave Blue for girls' mini-aces track coach. AJ Clausen for junior high boys' track coach. Christopher Olson for elementary musical assistant. Paul Payne for boys' mini-aces track coach. Paul Payne for co-archery director, and Don Kerna for co-archery director. Recommend to approve the following as a high school that works making middle grades work committee member for the 2017-2018 school year. Pay from those, uh, funds, the grant fund for those. Andrew Gehagan for team co-chairman, two hundred dollars. Discussion? Rule call please. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Moving on to employment of classified staff, a motion please.
Sure.
Thank you, Denny. A second. Thank you, Jen. Recommend to approve the resignation from Jason Keely as assistant wrestling coach, titles, for the 2017-2018 school year. Discussion? Rule call. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Moving on. Motion please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Great, Amanda. Recommend to approve the resignation from Casey Metz effective November 22nd, 2017. Recommend to approve Kristen Coller as a classified substitute for the 2017-2018 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2017-2018 school year pending certification and background check. James Agley, assistant track coach. Pete Figgins, assistant wrestling coach. Jeff Friend, co-archery director assistant. Gabe Inkrott, co-archery director assistant. Cara Johns, co-miniaces girls' basketball coach. Pam Payne, assistant track coach. Jeff Schrader, co-assistant softball coach. Mike Bellina, co-assistant softball coach. Bob Leatherhead, co-miniaces girls' basketball coach. Recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the 2017-2018 school year pending certification and background check. Jeff Graves for archery. Nando Hasso for track. And Caleb McAlexander for archery. Recommend to approve a one hundred dollar per occurrence stipend to Eric Bassett for snow removal during non-school hours. Discussion? I have discussion, only because I find it somewhat interesting, the letter of resignation from Casey Metz. Um, if you guys could look at that relatively quickly if you haven't already done so. The only reason I want to bring this up is I want some clarification. It says about working overtime and bus trips and then how, how that works in the seniority. I just want to make sure that that process is in place and is being followed, because that seems to have been a concern.
We do do it by seniority, and Anita puts together a sheet each fall, and then in the winter, sends it all out to them by seniority to pick their trips that they want to do.
And then the subbing in other departments?
She has subbed in other departments, uh, and she was not called back to some of those places to sub.
Alright, I just wanted to clarify, I mean, all those, everything was okay? Alright. Any other discussion? Rule call please. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Moving on to services and agreements, a motion please.
Move.
Thank you, Jen.
Second.
Recommend to approve snow removal from Hernice Snowplow Service on an as-needed basis for the 2017-2018 school year. Discussion?
I really hope we don't need to move that much, I hope we don't need Eric that much.
Me too.
So how does that, I mean, just, they don't do sidewalks, right? And Denny does, or, I mean, Eric does sidewalks, is that how it works out?
And they only, like, if it's during the week, they only kind of, only a certain amount of snow, otherwise Eric passes, unless it's on the weekend. Okay, perfect.
This is just that, I think, you know, it's just...
Yeah, it's worked, it's worked real good.
Yeah, it always is very good.
Rule call please. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Other business. Motion please.
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Denny. Recommend to approve a change to Neola Policy 5200 on attendance. Recommend to approve an attendance change to the middle school, high school student handbook. Recommend to extend recognition and congratulations to the football team for their outstanding performance in hosting a home district playoff game. Recommend to extend recognition and congratulations Christopher Olson, a host of volunteers, and the cast and crew of the Elementary Musical Disney Aladdin Junior for their outstanding performances on November 17th, 2017, to November 18th, 2017. Recommend to approve a four-day trip for the class of 2018 to Florida. Anticipated dates of travel on March 21st, 2018, to March 24th, 2018.
I would like to say, we have great kids here, I could go on and on about it, but, um, it was the district, it was our home day playoff game. I was sitting over by the student section, and we had a lot of visitors from other schools, students, applying to school, and there was a lot of different school codes there. And I was very impressed, and honestly, I don't remember who it was, but our students talked them into coming over into our student section. They wanted, they invited them over and like, come on and, you know, enjoy this and stuff. And so all of the visiting students there that were sitting there all moved over into our student section. It was just really nice to see that our students were very welcoming and very gracious and kind to them, and it was neat.
How many kids are in the senior classes here? I was going to ask that, too.
I think it's seventy-six.
So only a third of them are going on the class trip.
Only a third of the kids are going on the senior trip?
That's a discussion I'd like to have, another time.
Okay. I just wondered what it was.
Because I've had my concerns, I'm sure, with Mr. Frenchman, and I think some of you over the last few years. I want to make sure a senior trip is for all the seniors. And I know last year, we had eleven out of sixty-two go, and the year before that, we had, I think, fifty-two out of sixty-go.
Nineteen. Fifty-two out of sixty-two years ago.
Some of those kids were, some of those were adults, there was only eleven students.
That is something we discussed about our work section.
Yeah, we need to, needs further discussion, I would agree.
I have to say, with the football thing, you know, the, the musical, it was just fun to get to go and watch. I mean, you have to be proud of the kids, really fans, I mean, it's a pleasant experience.
When the humor's packed, when those kids are down there having a great time, and you see the smiles on their face when they walk back after the production.
I feel, I love it.
It, it is special, stuff we didn't get to do.
I love to see all the, um, that football, just, just community members, and just what support our community gets these cases.
About to chew my own horn, but thirteen, thirteen years ago, when I decided I wanted to start an elementary drama fund, there was ninety-nine dollars in it. And I hate to say, the thousands of dollars that has went through that account in the thirteen years that we've been doing productions. I'm sure it's over a hundred thousand that's went in and out of that account on productions for kids, so...
In the first year, we had it open to all of the elementary kids, me on a plate of blade of grass, I remember that.
We didn't turn any of them off.
Everybody got a part.
But after that, we've been limited to...
Can you talk one time about the musicals presenting money to the Hubert?
Yeah.
I saw it in the paper, did you hear it?
That is not a hundred percent yet.
Alright.
It may, we may not participate in.
Alright, okay.
We, we're hoping that the, the five other ones, the third spot, right, that's based on Jim on that side.
Okay, thank you.
We were, it was always going to be that way anyhow, that if they couldn't get the fifth one, that, I'm pretty sure they had the fifth one, I hope they do.
I saw that in tribute this week, I thought, oh, what?
Not to say if we didn't participate, we couldn't make some type of donation, or, you know?
Well, we do, or we do, correct, because, uh, with the number of kids that we have, they always have that other room. And, uh, I think we did an extra five hundred dollars, didn't we?
We haven't paid it yet.
For renting, and because we utilized that other room that's not part of our contract, and I've always been really good about doing that with all the productions over the years. If we use more than what we're, you know, give them extra money, because, you know, they're hanging by a thread too, so...
And they're so nice about sharing the costumes, of course, there are so many costumes in the room anyway, but I think they're really good about just sharing in general, which is nice. Any other discussion on this other business table, please?
Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Um, let's address the new business before we go to the old business. So, um, school, starting a little earlier, looking at that concept, discussion.
Yeah, I want to, uh, you know, just throw it out there, you know, we've had some, uh, little discussions, we had at the work session, and I think it's time that we, you know, just throw out there that it's not a hundred percent decided that we're going to do that, but we're looking at possibly starting school two weeks early. Uh, we, we're gathering information still, I know Andy has gathered information, and we have a list of four counties or six counties. We're gathering information still, I know Andy has gathered information, and we have a list of four counties or six counties.
The four county area.
Four county area. They all start.
What?
Except for Divide's County, middle of August. Or two nights. And their fairs are always after school starts, so fair is not a concern. We're trying to figure out how to work that out with our four-H kiddos, which of course, we would absolutely not penalize them at all for meeting their obligations with their four-H clubs. So I just wanted to let you know that, you know, the administrative team's really looking at that hard. It's on our agenda for Friday to have some more discussion about it. But we're gonna need to make a decision on that as a board, probably, you know, January, February at the latest, because they'll, they'll start working on that calendar then for the-
Can we potentially, like, have a mock-up calendar, like, the next two years of when, if we did move it up? And just potential, of understanding that we're not setting it in stone, and it has to be approved by the teachers and all that, but just like, okay, if we did this, this is potentially what we're looking at, about more provisional pressure. I'd like to see that.
Sure, yeah, sure, I can do that. Yeah, and, you know, it also gets us in sync with four county, where we take a busload of kids over. It would be at the same start time as them, and the same start time as the I E C, that we also bus kids to-
Well, there's state testing issues, too, that you've touched on.
Right, which is very important, yeah.
It'll be, too.
Them get us out, obviously, two weeks, two weeks earlier, too, as well.
To me, it's the main driving force.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
And, you know, we have well over, if I guess on the high school side, well over a hundred kids reporting to practice the last week of July now. There's sports, the things that are, I mean, there's, the school year's starting earlier, everything about the school, whether it's, you know, during school day, or our, you know, after-school activities, things are getting started. You know, it'd be great to streamline everything with, again, like, some four county person or the I E C, sport schedule, everything. Testing, number one, though.
Yeah, I was gonna say, should you explain that a little bit for media folks, why, based on the testing? Because that is the driving force behind this?
Sure, the state testing ends at the first, after the first week of May, and then makeups are the second week in May. And, you know, it's difficult to keep kids engaged, because they're pretty much done after the testing. Now, that's not the reason we're doing it, but it's kind of, the testing kind of winds down the year. And it makes sense that the school year would end at about the same time that testing ends. In addition, you know, I think the other two factors is the beginning of the year, is getting us in sync with the other two schools that we work with, the four county, four county school and the I E C.
And the teacher in me says, if you took those six days off the end of the year, and you put them at the beginning of the year, now you have teaching days instead of fill-in days.
Right.
Instead of before the test.
Yes.
Correct, correct, for the test.
You have time that you can get kids oriented to school and begin relearning, you know, get going.
And we're talking about slow starts in school year, too, wouldn't you?
Yeah. We would take a couple days off during fair week, most likely Thursday and Friday of fair week. Four-H kids would be excused if they need to be gone the other days. Be responsible for the work, just like when they go on by any other field trip or anything like that, which they're always good about doing that anyhow. But there wouldn't, that would not be an issue with our four-H kiddos at all, we would accommodate them. And ease it in the first couple of weeks, you wouldn't have, there wouldn't be two full weeks.
Does this work better for the kids that take the post-secondary options today?
Yes, because a lot of them are starting at Divide's College, or, I mean, it depends on whether they're taking their courses, to be honest. I mean, or say, some of the universities are still starting the second or third week of September, depending on, you know, their, their schedule. But I, I recommend, I wanna get on that, too, you know, and it's, it's not a lie. It's, it's hard to keep everybody motivated in the school year, especially after the testing. And be able to take those days, and be called filler days, and be able to actually put them in the beginning of the year, and then make that, make it that orientation of getting ready for the school year. Because right now, if we don't start till the first week of September, you're still taking a week or two to get the kids oriented to go. But now, we're starting all the way in the mid, mid-August, I mean, you are, you're giving us two or three extra weeks, potentially. And I don't wanna say it's about testing, but it is, it's preparing, covering academics and content and standards, just getting all that covered, that's two or three extra weeks to prepare for these tests. And you know how it is, and it's amazing how quickly these quarters fly by, and all of a sudden, you know, we're fall winter testing already. And, you know, it'll, it'll seem like, you know, we come back from Christmas break here in nineteen school days or eighteen school days, we'll be focusing on testing for the spring already. And that spring testing window, remember, that's a five-week window. Okay, it's five weeks, and when you have roughly, you know, the third grade guarantee, and those other tests that go on at the lower level, but when you're looking at seventy-hundred kids, that's the testing logistics, the scheduling, the time involved in this, the, the, the test prep, you know, once that final week of testing ends, okay, and I'm talking about the makeup days, everybody's breathing a sigh of relief, number one, and the kids are tested out. That's all there is to it. They are tested out, and they, they feel like, yes, the year's over, you know, and, and we're not going to school fills out, other schools are having the same conversation, and many of them have already made the adjustment, of course. So we're, in my opinion, we're kind of on the back end, we're at everybody else's coattails, making this decision, so.
Or academically for the students.
It's an over here.
It's, it is, and it really, it really is a something we should've done a long time. It probably would've happened if it didn't fall when fair falls. But I think there's, there's ways to solve that puzzle, too.
But I think with your schedule on Thursday and Friday off, that, you know, that really helps.
Well, interestingly enough, Andy and Jeff and Kirsten went to the fair a couple days this year during the day, and spent a great deal of time down there during the day, and walked around, and they only saw about eleven kids, something like that, or eight?
Well, the, the, the midway, all the vendors, the, the games, all this stuff, then it opens up to like one o'clock. It's mostly taking care of their animals, which we recognize that. So then we took the time to go down, and we walked through every single barn, we split up, we walked around, I mean, we, we did this with purpose. And I think we saw maybe four kids actually, actually at the fair. And I think there was one in the cattle barns that was actually working, and they were taking care of someone else's animal. You know, and, and again, we want to respect that idea of four-H and respect what they're doing, and that's why we wanna make sure that, you know, as long as they can validate that they're down there for four-H, and this is the time they need to be down there, so be it, it'll be excused, remember that.
Or they could come in late, I would assume, or something else, you know, against-
Absolutely.
Some of the shows, too, are, they're different than what they were even five years ago, as far as when they're scheduled, you know. So why'd show used to be a big thing on Wednesday, now it's all done on Sunday evening.
And Thursday's Kids Day, you know, having that day, and Friday's the big show day for a lot of the livestock and animals.
Sale day.
Sale, sorry, there you go. And it's just, you know, and again, ninety, ninety-some percent of our population is in four-H, isn't down there. So we're not, I mean, I hate to take ten percent of our population and say, well, you're in four-H, so we're gonna make everybody start school two weeks later. That doesn't make any sense.
Well, and it doesn't make sense, especially when you consider in all the other counties, that's not, it's, it's become a non-issue. The kids that go to four-H, they're there when they have to be, they come to school when they can, it's excused, and even we're done.
And it, and it's only gonna become an issue if the teachers and administration make it an issue. And that's what we have to do with our staff, and we need to educate everyone, you know, we're making a transition here. Let's make it as smooth as possible, we decide to do this, because you're right, it is a problem.
Give the kids the additional dates for, I know what you mean about the test, but, but at the end of the year, that is. We're doing a disservice to them, keep postponing this.
And we had talked about even, if you think about, you know, you talked about things moving up. Okay, I remember when Lily started maybe the middle of May, but usually the end of May. Now Lily starts late April, you know, so they're going-
It used to be done by the Fourth of July, and now it's all the way through July.
Well, they're still, they're done with the regular season before Fourth of July because of All-Stars, yeah. That's why it's all-
Regular season wraps up Fourth of July weekend already?
Yeah, yeah.
And then we go to the All-Star, you know, it's totally-
So kids, like, young kids in school, first, second, third, fourth graders, they're coming to school those last three weeks in May, for sure. Those three weeks, exhausted, because they've been at the ballpark until eight-thirty or nine o'clock, or, you know. So it's hard, it's hard.
I think we probably had more discipline issues those last three weeks than about the first three quarters combined. Listen, it felt-
Andy, you probably, that's a good point, you're probably, I'm sure it is. It's just natural, just natural.
And probably for the teachers, too, you know, they've been hammering this and hammering this, and now, so the tests are done, you know, you see the light at the end of the tunnel, and, you know, I mean, human nature is, you're, what's probably gonna come off the gas pedal a little bit? You know, so, except for your staff.
I don't know. I am, I'm a very relaxed teacher. All right, old business. Anything?
I had, when Danny commented about four counties finance committee, I know that's something we've kind of tossed around, but I do think that's a good, I think that would be a good extra person, or extra group of people looking at our finances all the time.
Like we talked at the work session, you know, maybe getting some, some community members with a few board, you know, at least two board members, so it's not, it's not classified as a board meeting, but I, I mean, I, I think that, I think it'd be crazy not to do it. I think we're letting opportunity slip by if we don't.
Yeah, and I think with deficit spending, I, I think it's very timely to say, we wanna get some people that are financially minded people to be an extra set of eyes looking at things. I know that's something we talked about, but I'd like to keep it on the burner.
Yeah, I think we need to keep the ball rolling on it.
Okay.
And the other thing was, I thought from the conference, and I know that's an expense, but I really felt like there were some things that were very informative and timely in the breakout sessions that were good, worthwhile, so thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you for going.
What if, what if in January, when we, when we do votes, and, you know, president, vice president, liaison, yeah, our organizational meeting, we include a couple of board members to be a finance committee, and then get the ball rolling there. Jared will be on the board at that time, and we can, you know, make that decision then.
So appoint a couple.
Yeah.
Any updates on the auction for the school?
Any other discussion? Anybody wanting to address the board? There has been a request to go into executive session for reason number one. So at this time, you will take a big break, and when you come back in, we will just go back into executive session.
Administrator, may I?
Board members only?
Board members only.
Uh, here.
He wants to say.
Good, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think you should. Get part of the board, I mean, you will be.